Oh, I get it. They worded to us.
Yes.
Call the meeting to order if I could please for Wycomico County Council. What I'd like to ask is that we do have a moment of silence if I could for the lives that were lost and the family members as a result of what I would consider the unconscionable act of cowardice in Paris, France, if we could. Thank you. Those of you that'd like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer of Blessed Reasons, please do.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory of God. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Starting off, if I could, I'd like to ask council for the approval of legislative minutes from November the 3rd. Entertain a motion to approve.
Show move.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections, suggestions?
Yes, sir.
Councilman Dodd?
First one on page two. Where it says Tri-County Council Board Member Recommendations. I didn't see the names. Would it be appropriate to put the council member names in that top paragraph?
Yes, of course.
And then the second one on page three. I think it was just a spelling area, a little more than midway down, starting at applications submitted in June. Was that where not by the people or was that where or not?
I haven't found it yet.
Cross the H out.
After June, Matt, about two-thirds the way down. It starts with applications. Looks to me like it's where. Okay. Did you find it? Thank you.
And then one more. That would be on page eight. The gentleman was Mr. McCroby and not Mr. McCain, and he's a middle school teacher. Just a spelling.
Thank you.
And I can get with you afterwards and get the correct spelling.
Thank you.
That's all I have on this.
Thank you, Larry. Any other corrections? Seeing on all those in favor of approval of the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried. Minutes approved. Entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes from November 3rd. Electrical standards. Motion?
Second.
Second?
Second.
Any corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried. Minutes approved. Approval of the work session minutes in reference to personnel regulations from November 3rd.
Show move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion of corrections. Seeing on all those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried. Minutes approved. Have I mixed up? Do we have the minutes for the school board? I had that on the agenda, but I don't.
They were emailed.
They were emailed? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the work session minutes from November 3rd for the school board?
Show move.
Second?
Second.
Everybody had a chance to review them, besides me? Are we there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion's carried. Minutes approved. Thank you. We now have two proclamations we'd like to present. Glad to see we have a crowd here tonight, today. First one, executive call, I believe you're here, aren't you? If you could, for Warwick Community College, representative from Warwick.
Good morning, council. Thank you so much for letting me take this time. You know, rather than read a proclamation word for word, let me tell you what I feel about Warwick Community College. It has brought so much to Wycomico County. It's celebrating its 40th year in Wycomico County. There's a couple of facts that I would like to really point out, though, that Warwick Community College enrolls more local residents who are pursuing an undergraduate education in Maryland than any other college or university in the state of Maryland. And I think that's a great honor that Warwick can do so much for our community as well as Worcester and Somerset Counties. So, on behalf of Wycomico County, Dr. McCormick, I'd like to congratulate you and Warwick and Dr. Hoy, and hope we have another 40 years very soon.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Dr. Hoy wanted to be here today, but he is in an external meeting with external evaluators for the next step of accreditation for our occupational therapy assisting program. So, he really had to be there. But, on behalf of everyone at Warwick, and even more importantly, on behalf of the Wycomico citizens who've benefited and improved their lives as a result of Warwick, we really thank you for your continued support. County Executive Office, County Council, most appreciated. And we hope to see many of you at our celebration tomorrow at 2:00.
We'll be there.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Vice President Holly will now present a proclamation for Home Care Month. Paul?
Yes. Up here with me, I have Paul Anderson from Home Call of Salisbury. This is a proclamation by the Wycomico County Council. Whereas, home care services provide high-quality and compassionate healthcare services to those in need, especially at times of community or personal healthcare crisis. And whereas, home care is the most preferred method of healthcare delivery among disabled, elderly, and chronically ill individuals eager to live out independently in their own homes as long as they possibly can. And whereas, home care services allow families to stay together and provide for greater health, dignity, and comfort in our communities. And whereas, home care in the United States is a growing alternative to hospitalization or other institution-based forms of healthcare for accurate and chronic illnesses, providing care to millions of Americans each year. And whereas, Home Call of Salisbury, the National Association of Home Care and Hospice, and thousands of home care agencies across the United States have declared the month of November 2015 as National Home Care Month, and are calling on all Americans to observe these occasions with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Now, therefore, the Wycomico County Council of Maryland does hereby proclaim November 2015 as National Home Care Month in Wycomico County, and we encourage the support and participation of all citizens in learning more about home care and hospice concepts of care for the elderly, disabled, and infirm. Done the 17th day of November 2015, Salisbury, Wycomico County, Maryland, and signed by all the Wycomico County Council members.
Thank you, Matt. My name's Paul Anderson. I'm the Patient Care Representative with Home Call here in Salisbury. And this is Kristen Lane. She's our team leader and a registered nurse. I just want to thank you and the council for the proclamation and just highlight the real importance of home healthcare services. It's a very valuable service. And again, recognize and appreciate all those nurses and physical therapists that are out there doing a tremendous service for our community. Thank you.
Morning, Ms. Graham.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the county council. Ladies and gentlemen, first item for the county council's consideration this morning is a presentation by Lower Shore Wind Partners. Representatives present today are Mr. Ernie Colburn, the CEO and Director of the Salisbury Chamber of Commerce, Ms. Katerina Enderfelt, President of Archon Welding, and Mr. Matt Drew of W. Booth Engineering Firm. Would you care to go forward? Did I miss anyone?
Morning. They have your chairs all the way back. And do us a favor, we really have a mic problem here. You need to make sure when you're speaking, you're speaking into a microphone, okay?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President, Mr. County Executive, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. It's a pleasure to be here with you this morning at the request of your President of City Council, Mr. Cannon, asked us to come in and give you a quick overview of what our progress is with regard to offshore wind. And we are named Lower Shore Wind, which makes no allegiance to whether it's offshore or onshore. We're working both ways. I just want to read a brief prepared statement. We're gonna, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Drew, who'll give you a visual presentation, and we'll try to keep it to five to six minutes in the interest of time.
Okay.
Our organization, Lower Shore Wind, has been formed to represent the lower eastern shore Wycomico, Worcester, and Somerset Counties. This local partnership is not taking an ideological position on the feasibility of an offshore wind park. What we do know, though, is that there's already generating business opportunities here in Maryland on the lower shore. We see this as a great opportunity for the eastern shore to be a part of this new industry. There are seven leases along the east coast, among those is the Maryland Project. The Maryland Project is unique because of legislation that requires the developer to show net economic benefit to the state of Maryland. Reality of this is that there will be approximately $1.7 billion, with a B, billion dollars in contracts for Maryland businesses. We have an opportunity to position ourselves for operations and maintenance, certain manufacturing, sales of consumables, and service providers. Specifically, there's the opportunity for cable assembly, the cable that will run between the turbines. There is the opportunity for specialized welding, which we have Archon Welding, which is with the assistance of Senator Mathias, secured state funds in the amount of $350,000 to start this entity, and their first graduating class is 2:30 this Thursday. So, if you can make it over on Northwood, that would be great. Shipbuilding, building barges that will haul parts out to the site, building crew boats, building product services boats, hauling food and various products back and forth from the site. Metalization, we're talking with a firm now from Belgium that does the preservation of the metal components out at sea because of the salt air. Turbine blade repair services, there are opportunities there with, working with residents, looking at a facility here. Our idea with the Lower Shore Wind is to position our operation not for a Maryland-only entity. Our competition is Sparrow's Point in Baltimore, Hampton Roads in Virginia. We want to position this as a central geographic location that will benefit the east coast wind facilities from the south to the north. We have the infrastructure here, we have the roads running north, south, east, west. We have a railroad that runs north, south with fairly flat land as far as tonnage is concerned. We, of course, have sea, and we have a beautiful airport that can be utilized for executives and bringing in supplies and what have you to warehousing that may be at the airport. So, with that precursor of what we're here for today, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt Drew, and he's gonna breeze through the PowerPoint of which you all have a hard copy in front of you. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Ernie, and good morning, Matt Drew with AWB Engineers. Thanks for the opportunity. This is an abbreviated presentation that we made about a month and a half ago at an international partnering forum. The characteristics of this industry is that it's, as Ernie said, it's nearly a $2 billion industry, and yet it doesn't exist in the United States. So, we need to position ourselves so that the firms from other areas, mostly the EU, when they come here, we can show them that we have a place that they can set up shop. So, our background, Somerset, Wycomico, Worcester Counties have a rich maritime, agricultural, and manufacturing history, and we want to show the new, the participants that we're a good place to set up shop and do business. We have a great regional workforce, competitive wage rates, the transportation infrastructure that Ernie mentioned, access, which is a key to both the offshore sites and the Chesapeake Bay for transportation. Potential sites are, that we're gonna show in this presentation are a manufacturing-based facility that would be located on the Wycomico River that would be for manufacturing components and shipping to the construction site, and then an operations and maintenance site that would be located very close to the final construction site. To give a thought about the economic benefit of that, Ernie mentioned nearly $2 billion. Nearly half of that economic investment doesn't happen with the initial construction. It happens during the 20-year lifespan of this wind park. So, it's a huge benefit for us. Here in our area, we have existing manufacturing capacity of cable assembly, welding, shipbuilding, and a former composite yachts facility. All of those industries are key to supporting this new offshore wind business. In addition to that, we have yellow pages of smaller manufacturing support businesses, machine shops, welding, sheet metal shops, and the like, that can all go to support this new industry. Two conceptual site plans that we're gonna see here are just that. They're conceptual site plans, but they're there to show potential suitors what could happen. So, this first site plan is a port-based manufacturing site. We see this located somewhere on the Wycomico River due to the existing aids navigation that are already in place, the 14-foot maintained depth that's gonna be required for the length of it. Here, we're showing in this schematic representations of physical size of the reels of cable that would be required for both the interconnection between wind turbine systems as well as the export cable. We're also showing representations of 75-meter blades, just to give you a sense of the physical size of these things. The physical size of these components is the reason why they have to be manufactured at the port side. They can't be transported over the roads.
And one blade is how long?
75 meters, 130, nearly 150 feet. Yeah, nearly 150 feet.
Just the blade itself?
Exactly. 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 This is a concept for a portside manufacturing. And then, with regard to the operations and maintenance, we've developed a couple of concept plans for those facilities. These need to be located in fairly close proximity to the offshore wind field itself. So, this is a site that's about four miles, four nautical miles from the site. And I've got a couple of blowups here. Here, we would have a 10,000-square-foot building that would be used for receiving parts, staging the logistics team. They would need at least four 80-foot boats that would, on a round-the-clock basis, be going, taking parts from the portside facility out to the wind farm to do maintenance. And then, as Ernie mentioned, there would be skills like blade repair, machine shop services, direct transport over the road, a lot of ancillary industries that would spin off of this as well. So, in conclusion, we think that this is a fantastic opportunity for us here on the eastern shore. We have great capabilities, and with the requirement in this for demonstrating a net economic benefit for Maryland, we think we're really well-positioned to take advantage of this. And then, this is a quick slide of our team members. Thank you. I'll turn that over to Matt. Katerina.
Katerina, how are you?
First, I want to say, I'm doing good, thank you. My name is Katerina Enderfelt, and I'm with Archon Welding and Torrey Corporation. And I mean this because of the business opportunities. As you hear from my accent, I'm Swedish, which means I love green energy, but that's not why I'm involved in this. It's involved, I'm involved because I want to sell my welding machines, and of course, we want to provide other training. So, I just wanted to leave you with a thought. Denmark, which is about the same size as Maryland, Denmark is the leader of offshore wind in Europe, and they are in the same, they were in the same position as we are right now, being able to be the first ones. Today, they're employing 29,000 people in offshore wind. They have, they are putting probably around $12 billion into the economy every year. So, sorry, it's an industry of $12 billion. And we have that opportunity. Offshore wind is going to happen whether we like it or not. I'm not saying it's going to happen in Maryland. It's going to happen along the east coast, and we have an opportunity to be a part of developing a new industry. How many times in a lifetime do we get that opportunity?
Just one final comment, too. I've made, I've heard people say, "Well, I'll never see this happen in my lifetime." We're looking at stealing the water probably in two years. So, it is going to happen in the, in our lifetimes, and it's a huge opportunity for our market to step forward and make a move right now to position ourselves as the east coast central facility for offshore wind as well as onland wind. Thank you.
Any questions from council? So, what is the next move?
What we're trying to do now is that we are trying, we have already started through training, because that, no matter what, we can train people and they can find jobs short-term. So, we started well, well, in training already. Now, we're trying to get funds for an operation and maintenance training and for blade repair. And we're starting by getting the workforce, because that's what the European companies will look for when they get here.
Yes, they will come in, the blade repair, for example, with the resins, they will come in with a crew that will actually teach our people how to get the skill to do this job. And we need a big facility similar. That's one of the reasons why in Matt's presentation, he had the old bayliner facility in there for blades where you got a high ceiling, 28 feet, so forth and so on. Cable harnessing that runs up inside the turbines, we've referenced Lavenault. Well, they're doing Chinook helicopter cabling, harnessing there. So, the conversion of that facility over and repurposing of the training of those people, it may be a possibility. So, we're talking with the owners of those companies about coming to the United States to set up those facilities here in Salisbury and Wycomico.
Other questions?
Thank you.
We appreciate you being here. I asked you to come because I felt it was important that Wycomico County knew exactly what was going on. I don't think anyone's been aware of a lot of it, because most of it's been kind of underground. This is something that the, that you have to recognize, literally came out of thin air. The proposal was made for the lease offshore. As Wycomico County, we could have done absolutely nothing. We could have read about it in the newspaper. But I commend Ernie and Katerina and Matt for the leadership roles that you took, because if you hadn't done that, we would not even, we wouldn't have Lower Shore Wind. We'd just, you know, we'd be going about our day-to-day routine, and this is what we need to do. This is economic development. And as you've said, there's a graduating class of 15, 15 students already that are gonna be put to work and already have jobs, who had no, no future before this happened. They literally came in. This was created out of nowhere. So, I appreciate that, and also the help that we got from the General Assembly as well is very important. But still, unless someone took the initiative, we would never see it. And that's why I wanted the three of you here, so that we could recognize that and appreciate, you know, show our appreciation for what you have done. What does the maintenance of one of these units cost per year? That's a number I forgot. I knew, but I forgot it.
I can't say for one. What I know that we're looking at is $40 million per year to run the wind park of 125 wind turbines.
Right. Real numbers that could actually be here, where we could be training them at Warwick Community College, and they could actually be servicing them. We have all the components in Wycomico County, as you stated, Ernie. We just need people to take leadership roles and make it happen, which is what we have. So, good luck in anything, you know, on behalf of the county council, anything we can do to help you, we certainly would be glad to assist. Thank you for being here.
Thanks so much.
Thanks. Take care.
Mr. President, before we go further, if I may make an announcement, if there's anyone in the audience who had planned to be here with regard to the Pond's Edge public hearing for a forest conservation easement relocation, that was withdrawn. It was learned that the applicant did not have everything that they need in order for that to occur. The reason I mention it now is because the public hearing had been advertised in the newspaper, but it is not on the agenda because the applicant isn't ready. The application has been withdrawn, and it's our understanding it is not likely to be resubmitted. So, if there's anyone here this morning who's interested in that public hearing, it will not take place. May we continue?
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
I don't see any. Whoop, maybe someone did.
What?
Never mind. Someone just left. Next item for your consideration is our delegate, Christopher T. Adams, who wants to speak with the county council about a legislative matter that has been a great concern here in Wycomico County and elsewhere in the state of Maryland. Views are strong on both sides. Delegate Adams.
Delegate, you can come up here if you'd like to.
Well, I'll stand right here.
Good. I'm not gonna tell delegate what to do.
I asked Councilman Kilmer if I could take 40 or 45 minutes, so I'll try to do this inside 20 for you. So, Council President Cannon, Wycomico County Council, good morning.
Morning.
And thank you for the opportunity to speak for you today and share my perspective from Annapolis on this very important issue for the business community. County Executive Bobby Culver, good to see you this morning as well. Before I start, I'd bring greetings from the, from Annapolis and the State House and some good news. Most people you see, if you don't know, you know, we've got these green wristbands, and they say Hogan Strong on them. And this is a stand of solidarity for our governor, who has fought a very important and difficult cancer diagnosis, a non-Hodgkin's lymphoma. And we found out yesterday that our governor went through his screenings, and he is, as of now, 100% cancer-free. I can tell you that we're very excited about that, and I'm glad to deliver that little piece of news to the council and the public. And while I was trying to think last night as we were hearing that news and how I'm gonna deliver a cogent argument here for you that's succinct and inside of five or so minutes, because you already understand the issue, I want to make sure I'm framing the public conversation, and that's, thank you for that opportunity to do that. And so, before I won my primary election, I did get the endorsement of Governor, now Governor Hogan, then candidate Hogan, and I put him on my list of endorsements for a business group. And I would share with you a few of my campaign promises that I made this business group back in the spring of 2014, before I won my election. So, one of the things I said, "Why did I run for office?" In 2012, my family business fought Maryland's Department of Labor Licensing and Regulation in Legislature. I was a leading participant in a significant modification and amendments to the 2009 Workplace Fraud Act, and to make this law workable and give a business a clear path to compliance to law, which did not exist prior, in this process, I developed working relationships with Republicans and Democrats in Annapolis. Further, I came to understand the nature of government bureaucracy in Maryland, that laws are written far too vaguely and with little thought or concern for unintended consequences, both upset and motivated by what happened to our company. I filed for state delegate in October of 2013, determined to be a voice for small businesses and the job creators on the eastern shore. My second point was, I'm very concerned about the state of our employment situation on the lower shore. We, in fact, have the highest unemployment rate of any region in our state, and as a businessman, I do understand and recognize Annapolis' role in creating regulatory headwinds that prohibit business from working and growing confidently in our state. In addition, our taxation and fee policies significantly affect the disposable income to citizens and business. This downward spiral of poor economy and stifling regulations must be reversed if we were to see an economic recovery in our region. I believe this message coming from the business perspective is critical to persuading Annapolis Democrats to pursue growth policies. In the same candidate survey, they asked me questions as a state delegate about Wycomico County issues. I think you'll find this fascinating and relevant. One of the first questions was, "Both the state and county are dealing with declining revenues due to the state of the economy." They were asking me questions as to this teacher retirement fund and how the monies are being now required of the county to finance this. My answer is, I'm opposed to unfunded mandates from the state to the counties. This policy must be reversed. Another question was, "The state has cut large portion of highway user revenues. What's my position on this?" This should be returned, and I support legislation that would achieve that goal, to return the money back to the local communities. The state has passed several pieces of legislation, they asked me, that infringe on private property rights that have passed down to local governments to enforce. on private property rights that have passed down to local governments to enforce. If elected, what steps would you take to regain these private property rights?" They're asking a state delegate a Wycomico County question. My answer is I would support legislation to restore private property rights. Wycomico County has completed its draft comprehensive plan. Have you read this plan? And what areas do you see that can be improved? I support and respect local land use decisions. "The state has passed legislation requiring all counties to submit a plan for tier mapping." And in short, they're asking my question on that and I answer, "I support and respect local land use decisions and support any steps the county would take to assert these rights." The last question I'll give you, and we'll get to the point, is what policies would you propose or support to make the cost of housing more affordable for the average citizen? Now, I have traveled my district in four counties. I know what the counties want. They want local control over most issues. My counties in my district, which is Talbot, Dorchester, Caroline, and my home county, Wycomico, want this local decision-making so they can decide for themselves based on the demographics and based on the challenges that we face in our community, based on the facts that now we see no, are, are things that we can't allow continue. And this is why I have stepped forward to share with you the challenge in Annapolis that I saw last winter and why I've decided to bring this issue now and why we need out pouring of support from the business community. Because it won't be one delegate, it won't be one senator. This will be a statewide effort. This message will be received from many, if not all, counties in a way not dissimilar than the way I'm sharing it with you. We need the business community throughout the state to stand up and say, "We want local control." All right? This is a, for the, for the sake of the conversation, this is what they call a blueback in Annapolis. So a bill. This is a real bill and this can become state law if I do a couple of basic things in Annapolis. The first of which is, can I get support of my fellow legislators? So on my list here, Adams' primary, I'm the primary sponsor of this bill. This isn't the bill of your interest, but it provides the example. And then I go around and I ask for delegates to co-sponsor my legislation, to ask for support. And I will tell you that Wycomico County asked for this local use, land use decision, the local opt-out. You wrote a letter to the delegation. I received the letter. Caroline County, Dorchester County asked for this. They've again asked us again this year in their legislative package, Caroline and Dorchester, for that control. Here's the problem. This bill last year never got a hearing. And the reason why it never got a hearing is because for things to pass in Annapolis, there has to be support on a grassroots level. Things are contentious. Things as a conservative and a proud conservative Republican are very difficult for me to pass, become much easier if the business community and the local elected officials who want control back stand up and say, "I want it." Because now my elected official will co-sponsor the legislation. And now we can move forward and now we can try to reach compromise when, right now, there is no compromise that I'm familiar with that I would find acceptable. For example, I would oppose taking taxpayer dollar, good taxpayer dollars, to throw against bad government policy, which is what you're facing right now. I would support those that would ask for what's happened in Delaware. Our governor in Delaware has passed a law on this issue and they've said to the business community, "We want you to provide a quote to the home buyer and let the home buyer decide whether that quote is worth it to them and whether their expense is worth the value." The builder is also required to produce documents from the state fire marshal's office in Delaware so that the homeowner is able to make a informed decision. And these are reasonable compromises that will happen between now and mid-January. But you need to know that the issue's on the table. This won't be a question if this bill gets a hearing. It will get a hearing and it can be modified. I've, I've modified what you have in your packet. It's now an emergency regulation, so if passed, the governor signs it, it'll go into force immediately. The current bill that I gave you would go into force in October of 2016, which is far too late to bring relief to our business community. I will close by saying that I wish that I was here having a general conversation. I've gone throughout my district and met communities, towns, my other county councils in my district and, and we have fun, we talk, I tell you my background. But let me tell you something. Pretty much every community that I've talked to in my district has talked about this sprinkler issue as if it is the number one challenge facing their communities right now. And it needs action. I'm willing to stand forward to bring the issue forward and thank you for your time. I'll be glad to answer some questions about the details, but I think you understand the nature of what we're trying to accomplish.
Any council questions? So what you're, you're stating also that the sprinkler system issue aside, your bill sort of advocates for local autonomy as much as it does sprinkler systems, is, am I correct?
I, I'll be perfectly candid with you. I'm not fighting the sprinkler fight at all. I'm wanting to give that control to you to decide. If you ask me as a homeowner whether I'd be willing to spend the $8,000, $10,000, $15,000 to install a sprinkler system to my house, I don't have that answer for you. But what I do believe in is that I want to have the choice myself to make that decision. I really do not want Annapolis, of all entities, telling me that I have to do that. That, that's counter to what I believe and at the beginning is why I ran for office is to decentralize and create limited government opportunities and that's why I'm here today.
Thank you, Delegate. Appreciate it. Thanks for taking the time.
Absolutely.
If I could at this time, I would also like to recognize Delegate Carl Anderton, Deputy Mayor of Bunkie Lookman. And we have, from Pittsfield, we have Ted Porla. See you. Thanks for being here. Michael, Sheriff Lewis, I'd recognize you, but I know you're going to be up here in a couple of minutes anyway. Thanks. Mr. Cram.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 162, 2015 at the request of the county executive approving and publishing the dates of the official holidays for county employees for the year 2016. Human Resources Director, Ms. Ennis is, I believe, here. Yes, there she is, if you have any questions.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 162-15.
Move.
There is, there is one thing I would like to call to your attention. At the, at the very bottom of the resolution that you have in your briefbook, it shows Friday, December 26, 2016 as the celebration of Christmas. Actually, that is a Monday and it is correct except where you have it.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Any questions from council on Resolution 162, 2015? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 163, 2015, confirming the appointment of Julius D. Zant, M.D., to the Wycomico County Ethics Commission.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 163, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
Next item for council's consideration is Resolution Number 164, 2015 at the request of the county executive making a supplemental appropriation from Fund 50, Rhodes Fuel Depot to the Department of Public Works, Rhodes Division, Fund 01, for fiscal year 2015 in the amount of $3 million and for fiscal year 2016 in the amount of $2 million, excuse me, $2,925,000. And Finance Director, Ms. Leslie Lewis, is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 164, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Any none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes.
The next we are consideration is Resolution Number 165, 2015 at the request of the county executive to make an appropriation of funds to the sheriff's office from unanticipated revenue in the amount of $34,894.94. Both Sheriff Lewis and Captain Todd Richardson are here to answer any questions you may have.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 165, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Sheriff Lewis? Captain Todd? Captain Richardson?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir. How are you?
Good, good, good.
Mr. President, members of the council, good morning. Did you want to know in April of this year, members of the Wycomico County Sheriff's Office responded to Baltimore regarding civil unrest at request of Governor Hogan and Maryland's Emergency Management Administration. Immediately following these deployments, which were two, lasted a duration of six days, we requested reimbursement expenses through MEMA. This was denied. During the deployment, several shortcomings were clearly recognized in areas of less-than-lethal munitions. Nearly after that, training was sought in these areas by sheriff's emergency response team personnel. In September of this year, four of our personnel members received training and certification in the deployment of less-than-lethal munitions to include the operation of the MRAP, which was acquired through the 1033 program through the federal government. Once certified instructors on hand, a list of gear munitions was compiled that would be necessary to handle both local and large-scale civil unrest. And we have a whole list of those items. In September of this year, after our budget closed, we received an unexpected reimbursement directly from the city of Baltimore in the amount of $29,179.94. And in September of this year, after the budget closed, we also received reimbursement of $5,715 for the loss of a patrol vehicle, one of our older patrol vehicles. Our request today is in two amounts totaling $34,894.94, be brought into the FY16 budget to cover the costs of these upgrades. And that's what we're requesting here today.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The patrol vehicle, was that destroyed in Baltimore or was that a separate incident?
It was total separate incident. Down here in Wycomico County, we lost no damage, we lost no equipment and we had no damaged equipment in Baltimore at all. This was a de-eraction to a patrol vehicle, the total of the event.
Good.
The questions?
All right. I guess I'm a little confused about, so this is reimbursement for overtime that you want to use for equipment purchase. Did Wycomico County then pay for the overtime for the officers? I, I guess I'm, you know, the, if you can see kind of the categories just seem to be mixed.
Yes, it was paid out of last year's budget and the reason the monies are before you as overtime reimbursement is because they came to us after the budget was closed. Had they came in prior to that, we would have brought them in as just unanticipated revenue and asked that they be relocated since this budget item. But now that the budget's closed, as far as having that money come into our overtime account, our overtime accounts right now are running at, either at or below budget this current year. So if we were to place these monies into the overtime account, it would just likely go unspent and be used. That would be where you're asking for contingency funds for the same amount of money in order to take care of this need that's been addressed. These came to us obviously post-budget last year when we were presented with the unrest in Baltimore, you know, which involved Ferguson and we've seen things happening all over the country. And for us to be unprepared for such an event here would be irresponsible of the sheriff's office.
Congressman Hall?
Was, was the amount that was given by Baltimore, the $29,179, did that cover the total cost of the overtime? Was that what you requested?
Yes, it did. They, they covered everything 100%. They covered fuel, some meals, some lodging and the overtime spent. They made Wycomico County whole one neighborhood.
So, so it truly was unanticipated because it should have gone in last year's budget and not this year's budget?
Absolutely. That's correct.
Now, your appropriations that you're asking for, couldn't they be put in next year's budget? Is it urgent that they come in this year's budget?
We need these items on hand now, actually. The problem is that...
Once ordered four to six weeks out, at least, probably six to eight would be a better estimate.
I would have been in front of you asking for these monies earlier under contingency, but I simply wasn't able to order this equipment because I didn't have the trained instructors to deploy it. Everyone that we sent to training is a certified instructor and they went to train the trainer events. So not only once we hit this mission full, they, they will train up the entire offshore. So we use those four as instructors to train the rest of our people as well.
I was looking at the budget from the, this past, the most recent budget that was just approved. And in the three categories where this is being requested, one of them was reduced over 28% from the prior year. The second category, there was only $1,000 allotted for that category. And the third category, 54009 under capital, was actually reduced 100%. But it seemed to me as of last year, of June, July of last year, these categories, these specific line items were being reduced.
That was part of being requested or instructed to submit a flat budget and we reallocated funds to other areas. These funds that we're requesting today are new items that would have been in the budget had we realized that these shortcomings were about to come about. But the climate change in the United States and worldwide has caused this to not oversight in what our budget request were last year.
Do you anticipate that this upcoming budget, that these categories will be increased?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Some of these, some of these pieces of equipment are long-term pieces of equipment like the LRAP, which is a loudspeaker device that you need to project voice to a large crowd before any munitions could be dispersed upon the crowd. It's by law that you have one of this type of things. It's a $7,000 piece of equipment that will last many years. Munitions unfortunately are going to continue to be at some expense, but this is a startup cost, so it's not like it's going to be a repeat cost unless we expend all those emissions on numerous events. And then there is the training side of it and the list of munitions, about half of the munitions is for training and half of it is for real, real situations.
Is, is this equipment for use here in Wycomico County or if there's another situation in Baltimore, would you be taking this up there?
Both. Or Ocean City or Worcester County, whoever requested us on mutual, we employ one of the largest SWAT teams on the eastern shore, actually the largest SWAT team on the eastern shore and it has become an area asset. But as a result of that, we were able to acquire equipment and grants that allow us to come to the south. We are the biggest for the hub for the whole western shore, so when people need help they have to call on us or...
Any other questions? Sometimes I'm a stickler for, you know, when something's budgeted for particular use, that it should be applied to that. And not, you know, I'm not really a huge fan of transferring large amounts of funds when it's been approved for one area to then all of a sudden be spent on another area when an opportunity might arise. But on the other hand, it's been expressed to me that, you know, if you have a department head, a sheriff that is responsible for that budget, it is their, you know, it's their job to decide whether or not something is needed, whether departments, whether itemization needs to be changed, whether amounts need to be changed from one fund to another. So I would defer to that, to that judgment. And that's just my personal opinion. Any other questions at all? No? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor of, where are we? Resolution 165? All those in favor of Resolution 165, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution passes. Gentlemen, thank you for your help. Captain, thank you for all your...
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Mr. President, that's all I have for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cram. Good morning, Mr. Roser. How are you?
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. President. The Office of the Internal Auditor performed an audit of the county purchase card program and I'm going to ask for the assistance of Dean Willie. I have a couple of slides for you to help illustrate what we're going over here.
Entertained a motion to accept Resolution 166, 2015.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We previously audited our purchase card program for FY16. We previously audited our purchase card program for FY 2011. The objectives for this audit were to determine the adequacy of oversight, to assure authorized usage, and to assess internal control and related adherence to those controls. Scope was open-ended. We looked at transactions for the first half of FY 2015 and compared them with the first half of FY 2011. Usage of purchase and travel cards in the county increased 83% over the four-year period. And uses changed to include larger purchases as well. Next slide, please, Dean. We conclude that purchase card system internal control is adequate on our three-point system. And this is just in way of a review for five years here. We have been using a three-point score on most of our audits sanctioned by the international standards. Adequate means that the findings are subject to reservations. A number of findings, some of which are significant, have been raised and where action is in progress to address these findings and other issues known to management. These actions may be at too early a stage to allow a satisfactory opinion to be given. Some of the findings were that 26% of the issued cards were unused. Alcohol purchases are possible. That should have been blocked through merchant coding. The county relinquished central control over purchasing through the use of credit cards. Next slide, please, Dean. As you can see here, the red is your usage in the study period this time, which is the first half of FY 2015 compared to the prior audit. You can see that the Sheriff's Department rode solid ways, corrections, parks, parks and rec, were, increased their usage exponentially over the four-year period of these purchase cards. And we noticed also that larger purchases were taking place. For example, the roads division purchased asphalt for road construction through the use of purchase cards. We started purchasing computers with credit cards, and so on. We recommend that management explore alternatives to credit card purchases for larger purchases and provide central control. So I guess what I would like to tell you is this, that when these things started back in 2011, the purpose of the purchase card program was to help streamline purchasing for smaller purchases in Y Comico County. Recently, to my mind, maybe the pendulum has swung a little bit the other way. We stopped purchasing rubber bands and copy paper with purchase cards, and now we're purchasing computers and asphalt. So I think that we need to explore alternatives to credit card purchases for these larger purchases and swing that pendulum back to central control. We also need to review these merchant codes, eliminate the unused cards, reevaluate card and transaction limits, including an update for the user manual that accompanies this system. And additionally, we have evidence, I would like everyone to know, that management is in the process of addressing these issues. We plan to follow this up on a continuous basis. You can look for your next report in approximately 90 days. We would also like to thank those who offered candid assessment of the purchase card program. And again, we plan to monitor the situation going forward. Respectfully submitted, Steve Roser, CPA. And I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Council questions?
Steve, when you made the statement that we went from purchasing rubber bands to buying asphalt, how are they, I don't know how this sounds, so how are they buying rubber bands now?
I'm not suggesting that we're no longer purchasing rubber bands with purchase cards.
No, I'm saying, you said we went from that to that, so they still are using them for minor purchases?
Yes.
Okay. Now, when you go from, who gave the instructions to make the larger purchases?
I think part of the problem that we have with this whole situation right now, Councilman Holloway, is that the folks who put this program in motion are no longer here. So the push at the time was, by people who, again, are no longer here, was to decentralize purchasing in order to streamline the process of purchase orders and to take some of the burden off of the finance department when it comes to some of these things. And we said back in 2011, when we did the original audit, that this was all for the good, and it was at that point. The internal controls that were in place for the 2011 system were adequate to control the purchases that were taking place at that time. Now we're of a different opinion because of the nature of purchases that are taking place now with this system.
When you go to page seven, number four, the alcohol purchases. Do all of the receipts that come in that show the purchases, for instance, you can buy alcohol, you know, at a convenience store. Do all of the receipts that come in, do they require, that's listed on there, what was purchased?
Yes.
What happens if you, and I've experienced this since we talked a week or so ago about this, you go to a convenience store and you just buy something, and you get a receipt for the amount of sale, but no real description. So does the employee write on the receipt what it's for, or hasn't the county experienced that problem?
Well, first, there's two parts to that. The second part, yes, it's required that the employee write on the receipt what it's for. The first part is, in most cases, what you purchase is on that receipt. My question with the alcohol was a couple of things. We're looking at the merchant category codes, and I was told back in 2011, and may have been the case, that the merchant category codes for alcohol were not in our system, therefore we were unable to purchase alcohol. So then the first thought was, there's a convenience store that has a merchant category code for a convenience store that maybe sells beer and wine. That was the first test. So we went to a local convenience store with my purchase card, after informing finance that we were going to do this test, and purchased a bottle of wine in this case. The receipt clearly said it was a bottle of wine, and I was clearly able to purchase it. So then the working theory was that because the merchant category code for this particular institution was a convenience store, I was able to do that. So we took the test to the next level, which was to try to purchase alcohol at a liquor store. Then took my purchase card to a package store in Delaware and was also able to buy alcohol there, negating the theory that, okay, the reason was that this was a convenience store. Now, this all needs to be prefaced with the fact that there was only one purchase of alcohol in the whole testing that we did, that was done by the county, and it was done by a chef at the civic center who needed that particular product in order to, for a recipe. So my whole concern here is not that the county is out buying kegs of beer with our credit cards, it's that our credit cards are capable of doing that and should not be.
Any other questions?
Are there guidelines as to the usage of these cards?
Yes, and the guideline, the original manual that was put together governing the use of these cards is very robust for the 2011 scope of what we were actually purchasing with these cards. Now we're suggesting, as my understanding, have evidence that management's in the process of updating the manual as part of a bigger-picture approach to changing the way that we make some of these purchases that we're currently making with credit cards. So there will be, I'm convinced, a new manual at some point.
Any other questions? And Mr. Rosie, thank you again for such a thorough review.
Thank you.
It's very good, and I'm assuming you'll be back maybe before the 90 days is out, because I'm assuming some of these will be corrected.
We're going to continuously monitor the situation, and I'll bring before council progress reports if you would like.
Thank you very much. All those in favor of Resolution 166, 2015, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, resolution passes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Harris, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. President. We have a public hearing and adoption for legislative bill 2015-15. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Tuesday, November 17, 2015, commencing at 10:30 a.m. in the council chambers of the Government Office Building, Salisbury, Maryland, in conformity with Section 311D of the Charter of Y Comico County, on the following bill, which was introduced for consideration at a legislative session of said county for the year 2015. The following bill may be called for final reading and consideration commencing immediately after the aforesaid public hearing. 2015-15, an act to amend the Y Comico County Personnel Manual, Chapter 15, entitled Leave Benefits and Holidays, to add Section 1517, entitled Mentoring Leave, allowing county employees to use leave to participate in the Y Comico County Board of Education Mentoring Project. If the foregoing bill, number 2015-15, is enacted, it will take effect 60 days from the date it becomes law, subject to the referendum provisions of the Charter of Y Comico County, Maryland.
Ladies and gentlemen, Harris.
You're welcome.
We now open the floor for public hearing on legislative bill 2015-15. If you have any comments you'd like to make, I'm sure some do, please go to the podium and state your name. Thank you.
Good morning, Council President Cannon, and to our county executive. I just want to say, this is an outstanding effort that the county is making to provide services to help with our young people in our school system. I thank Ms. Harris and also Anthony, I'm not sure who he is, but I've contacted him. I just want to let you know that if we can get this passed, that this will add numerous adults into our school system, will help with our efforts in providing the 4A developmental assets, which is providing a caring adult outside of the child's home to provide support and constant mentoring for our young people. I've talked with Anthony again to relieve some of the tensions that may be going on about how we track this. We do have a system, and I'll just mention that if that's okay, we have a system in our school systems called Passage Point. For anyone that has been into our schools, when you come into our school system, you must use your license to scan a machine called Passage Point, which actually does a background check on sex offender registry. Once that license is scanned, there's also a picture taken, which time stamps the time that the person comes into our school. Once they finish with their mentoring with that student, they're asked to come back to the office and sign out, which will also give us a timestamp, which will show you the time that they arrived and time that they left. We can provide that to the HR department of the council anytime to show members of your staff that has actually come into our schools with also a picture to make sure that that was the actual person if it's need to be. We also have set up some tracking mechanism within our program, mentoring program, to actually show the benefits of mentoring, where we're running reports to track the students' progress now for the first term they ended last week. And as mentors come in, we're able to track and give you feedback once a month or quarterly on every marking term on the progress of students regarding attendance, regarding discipline concerns, and their grades. So again, this is an outstanding effort. I've never seen anything like this before, and again, we're partnering with every mentoring agency. Again, when we talk about Y Comico County Mentoring Project, we're talking about coming into our school system at least once a week for about 45 minutes to an hour, providing much-needed support to our students and our system. Again, thank you so much, and I appreciate all that you're doing to help our county and our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Any other public comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of introducing legislative bill 2015-15, council comments? I guess entertain a motion to adopt legislative bill 2015-15.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
I'll make sure I did that, I wasn't sure if I did. All right. Discussion. All right.
I have a comment. I think this is very worthwhile, I think it's an initiative that was set up between the Board of Education and our county executive, certainly will further mentoring and help you achieve your goals. And I think it's a wonderful program. I hope it succeeds to the extent that you hope it will too.
Any other comments?
Part of this was a spinoff, actually, from a chamber meeting where the Chamber of Commerce decided to have advocacy meetings at their chamber. And it came from a meeting that Bob and I attended when it was brought to our attention as to some needs in Y Comico County. So I felt that was a very productive session, has led to see it happen. Of course, Mark, you're always championing your efforts, and everybody recognizes the good work that you're doing. Councilman Dodd, we'll start with you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Count Davis?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye, unanimous. Legislative bill 2015-15 has been adopted.
Thank you, and we have, for introduction, legislative bill 2015-16, an act to amend the Y Comico County Personnel Manual, Chapter 15, entitled Leave Benefits and Holidays, Section 1513, entitled Other Paid Leave, to allow administrative leave in the event of a county executive declared emergency. Add a new Section 1518, entitled Liberal Leave, allowing nonessential employees to use accrued paid leave except sick leave under certain emergency conditions without penalty. And to amend Section 2701, entitled Definitions, to add essential employees. Michelle Ennis, Director of Human Resources, is here to discuss it if needed.
Okay. Entertained a motion to introduce legislative bill 2015-16.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion.
I just have one question. You were talking about accrued leave. I know there's always somebody that wants a burn every hour that they have. What if somebody has zero hours and then you declare a state of emergency?
You can request advance leave from your department head, in which you will, they can advance you vacation leave, and when you accrue it the following month, it would clear it up.
Okay, that doesn't mess the books up or anything?
No.
Okay, good.
We're able to track that.
Any other council questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of introducing legislative bill 2015-16, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, thank you, bill's been introduced. Ms. Harris, I guess we would set a public hearing?
Yes, and I don't have a calendar.
December 15th would be the earliest available date.
December 15th?
Thank you, Mr. Kramer.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. And I believe we have one more, am I correct?
Yes. We have, for introduction, legislative bill 2015-17, an act to amend Chapter 138, titled Electrical Standards, Section 138-2, titled Adoption of Standards by Reference to Adopt the National Electrical Code 2014, with an amendment and to amend Section 138-13, General Requirements for Registration, to require an applicant to be under the direction and supervision of a master electrician. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning, Zoning, and Community Development, is here for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Harris. Entertained a motion to introduce legislative bill 2015-17.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Questions? I know we had a work session on this, a very good work session, by the way. Questions from anybody? All those in favor of introducing legislative bill 2015-17, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried, legislative bill 2015-17 has been introduced. Public hearing given December 15th? That would be fun. That'd be great. Thank you, Ms. Harris.
You're welcome.
This time we now open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments you'd like to make, please come to the podium, state your name. Delegate Anderson. Glad to have you with us.
Good morning, everyone. How you guys doing today, huh? Very good. My name's Carl Anderson. Blessed to be the delegate representing Y Comico, chair of the Y Comico County delegation. Two things real quick, I know that you have a work session coming up with the referendum you're proposing, or the legislation you're proposing to take to Annapolis to have a referendum on whether or not we want to change the way our school board is selected. So before we take anything up, I'd like to have a draft, if there's anything that you guys can provide, so that way when we meet with our delegation meeting, we can have everybody see it at the same time, so that way we're all on the same page going up. And I'm sure you guys are already planning that, but I just wanted to...
Certainly, you'll get it.
And I'd be remiss if I didn't say something about, you know, my colleague who was here earlier today, who spoke about repealing or changing the sprinkler bill. And, you know, I think we all want the same thing, we just kind of have a different avenue that we want to travel to do it. And, you know, my avenue and some of my colleagues share that our same thought process is we start local, you know? Instead of trying to convince 40 folks who supported a bill to automatically change their mind statewide, it's going to be a pretty insurmountable task. Not saying it's impossible... Not saying it's impossible, but it's pretty daunting. So, you know, I would start with a Wycomico County bill. Try it here and go out from there. And I don't think we should be putting in the legislation repeal or compromise or tax incentives or anything like that. I think that detracts from the whole purpose of the bill, which is to allow for local control. So I think we go with a bill asking for local governments to make up their own mind. If you want to offer tax incentives, if you want to offer opt-outs, if you want to offer right of refusal or whatever it be, it should come from you guys. It shouldn't come from us. That defeats the whole purpose of the legislation, you know? Toning it as local control, you know, if you're touting that, then it should be that. But so, you know, we're all working on things. And I look forward to a discussion when we get together in a couple of weeks. But, you know, just sitting here, I thought that if I didn't at least explain, there are some other avenues that we're looking at, you know? So, but anyway, you guys have done a great job. You look beautiful this morning, each and every one of you. So give yourself a round of applause for that. Thank you now, see you.
Thank you, thank you, Delegate Anderson. Any other public comments? Seeing none, that concludes public comments. Council comments. We start to my rate. Councilman Dodd?
Just like to thank everybody for being here today. It was a packed house earlier and it's good to see that.
Any other comments on comments? Councilman Hall?
Couple of things. The Natural Resources Conservation Committee that the county has did a tree planting of over 50 native trees at Station 16 on November 17. The 50 native trees had about 50 participants planting these trees. And they went from cypress to other local trees that are indigenous to the area. And absolutely was wonderful to see the community turnout, besides our delegates who were there, Judith Stripling, who chaired this, John Grount, Jelisa Tate from the county and city. And there was cooperation from foresters, master gardeners, neighbors, faith-based churches, and city and county employees. It was a wonderful turnout to see so many people involved in a tree planting in front of Station 16, as well as adding some ambiance to that station itself. Also, last night on November 16, there was a swearing-in of our new city employees, which include our new mayor, Jake Day, new council president, Jack Heath, Vice President Laura Mitchell, also council members from Yarabota, April Jackson, and Jim Irtin. As a council member, I look forward to working with them, and I'm sure the county does also. So congratulations to them.
Thank you, Councilman Hall. Any other comments? Presidential comments. I'd like to say that I attended the Veterans Salute Memorial at the Civic Center. It was a very, very nice event, very well deserved. Also attended the MAC Center, the Purdue Educational Center. That was initiated last week, which I'm glad to see. It's a very needy cause. I'd like to thank the Purdue family for their participation in helping the MAC Center to that degree. Also attended Chief Steve White's funeral. This is a man who will certainly be missed in Wycomico County for all he has done for Wycomico County and the fire service. His achievements were monumental and we really appreciate everything he did. We send out our best to his family as well. And again, also, John, I know a lot of council members attended a lot of these events as well as last night. I'm looking very forward to working with Mayor Day and President Heath, and Vice President Mitchell, and the rest of the council. Congratulations to them for their election and serving. And we certainly, I know the executive as well, we're both, we're all very anxious to start working with the city of Salisbury and moving things forward. They have a lot of great ideas, we have a lot of great ideas. I think together we will certainly make things excellent for not only the city of Salisbury, but for Wycomico County as well. That being said, entertain a motion to close the legislative session so that we can go into open work session, followed by a closed session.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.